Okay, so I guess I'm gonna just turn it over to you and let you run through it.
So this meeting was scheduled a while ago. It was actually scheduled as a final assessment hearing for the CASA 66 Improvement Project. And since action was taken last week, I'm gonna continue through this so we can take input, but I called it a public hearing because...
Can I tell you, just for some people that maybe don't know what happened last week, do you wanna just briefly go over it?
Sure. The city decided not to assess the project. Do you want me to do any more detail?
No.
Okay. So here we go. We're gonna go through this. Everyone was provided this if they wanted it. I don't know how well this is gonna work. So essentially, we're gonna go through this information very quickly. Project scope, improvement cost, purpose cost and timing, single-family home cost scenario as a result of the steps taken by the city council, the non-residential cost scenario, and then the next steps. So we've had two improvement hearings on this. This is our third, this one being the final assessment hearing, now a public hearing. The two previous were improvement hearings, and those were done to order the improvement and then to order the improvement again when we thought we were going out for bid in September of 2021. So this improvements, this is the project scope. It's from the former city hall location all the way up to the car wash. It's, the project is the extension sanitary sewer. It is a stormwater quality project that's being funded by the city and the county and a grant that the city received from Bowser. It is to basically take five direct discharge of the stormwater system to Cross Lake and run those through treatment areas to enhance water quality and enhance the water quality of Cross Lake. And then through the course of this, it's reconstruction of CASA 66, the pavement, the curb and gutter, the trail, but also then the replacement of the remaining sanit- or storm sewer that was not impacted with our build. Again, this is information that was shown twice before. Water quality protection is the main focus of this. Obviously, there's always septic system performance concerns. This project originated with concerns at Moonlight Bay Restaurant with their septic system. We know that there has been some recent commercial development, we, in terms of expansion. We know that there is some new stuff that's planned that's coming. And then in 2010, based on information we have from 2020, we knew that ages of septic systems were older than many had thought along this stretch. And then obviously, we wanted to address the stormwater discharge into Cross Lake. So here's where we're at with the bid we received from Anderson Brother, or from Casper Construction out of Grand Rapids. You factor the entire project cost is $2,537,180. That's still an estimate because that assumes some easement negotiation costs. It assumes that the contract construction price is gonna come in without any changes. And at the quantity we estimated assumes the bonding, legal, and engineering percentages of the project to be at 20 percent. The estimated project cost for sanitary street in storms, so this is not including the stormwater ponds and the storm sewer that's associated with directing the stormwater to those ponds, is $2,58,859. And you can see that we've estimated a city portion and a county portion of that cost. So ultimately, when the city is paid back by the county in 2024, the city will be paying a portion of that cost. The estimated project stormwater quality costs, this is the stormwater retention basins and the storm sewer pipe that's necessary to convey the water to these areas. It includes the city purchasing a lot and negotiating another easement for stormwater and an estimated cost for negotiating the final easement for stormwater. $478,000 by agreement. We got $315,000 in grant, and the city and the county are splitting the remainder. So that's how this project cost breaks out. We started this in 2018. Last improvement hearing was on September 22 of last year. We bid the project in January, awarded the contract, and construction is stated, is set up to start next week. So last week, the city council, after long deliberations and discussions over many months and crossing a couple of years, decided that they weren't going to directly assess for costs associated with this project to benefiting properties. They are choosing rather to use their dollars in the form of Bowser grant, ARPA dollars that the city had, and then I think they're gonna bond for, or I don't know, what do we come out of? General fund? General fund. So there is no direct assessment to properties adjacent to this. There is still a cost. The remaining costs are, and requirements are that any property that has a septic system that is 10 years or older would be required to hook up within one year. The city connection cost, this was a change. These are numbers that the council hasn't seen. They've been verified by the city administrator using a inflationary factor that he found. But the, as directed by the city council, the residential home site or residential cost for a connection would increase from $4,000 to $5,500. This is to reflect, as was directed by the council, the inflation that occurred from the first phase until now. So those years are what, Mike? 2006 to 2022. And really, what the connection cost is, is a phrase for your right to be, to have your waste treated at the plant. The wastewater treatment plant only has a finite number of places at the table, if you will, and that's your place at the table in perpetuity for your property. There's a private property pipe cost. That's the cost to get from your existing septic system to the service that's left at the right-of-way, where the right-of-way and the property line are. That is gonna be site-specific. It will be more costly or less costly for some, dependent upon the mode they choose or the location of their septic system relative to the road and the connection where you're left there. The sewer user charge, this is a charge every month, whether they're there, whether you're a snowbird, whether you're down in Florida and not occupying your property during the winter months. It's $55 per month. It's not metered. It's a set charge regardless of your use during that month. For non-residential, so that's everyone else, again, the same requirements. You're required to connect at the 10-year septic age. That cost through inflation from 2006 until now went from $6,500 to $9,200 per equivalent residential connection. Again, that pays for your treatment space within the treatment plant. We do, for just about everybody, we're basing it on chapter 50. Most properties will have one connection charge, whether that's residential or some of the, or most of the commercials. There are three properties that the city installed meters in 2019, and we're continuing to monitor the flow, and those connection charges will be determined later in this summer when we have all of our information. Private property pipe cost, again, is site-specific. The sewer user charge is $55 per 8,000 gallons per a commercial property. If you go over 8,000 gallons, you pay another 55. So that is different from residential. We wanna point that out. The city does meter that flow, and the city reads that flow on a monthly basis. And the last thing is we required or we requested to get temporary construction easements from about 13 properties on the west side of CASA 66 for the purpose of giving them the benefit of getting the sanitary sewer service further into their property away from the trail. So at the point that they wanted to reconnect, they weren't undermining the trail or the curb and incurring additional cost. Additionally, we wanted to modify the trail so that when it crossed driveways, it made, it met ADA requirements. And so for us to make a smoother transition into their property, we wanted to go back some feet instead of having abrupt increase in elevation. I think as of last week, we had received six out of 13. So we have seven yet to get. I know I've talked to at least one individual that we just need to get them the papers. They either didn't get them the first time or whatever happened, but we can get that. So at this point, again, there is no assessment. There is probably questions on various aspects of remaining costs, but this is a public hearing, so the protocol is to state your name, state your address, and then provide your input.
So that being said, we'll open it up to public input, but we do want you to state your name and address when you come up here, and you gotta come up to the mic because we're recording it. So who's got the first question? Don't be bashful. This is your time. Come on up.
Hello, I'm Dave Gahn. I own Cross Lake Canvas and Upholstery, and am involved with this. And I've tried to keep up with all the iterations, but getting caught up now. So most of these questions I have are probably gonna be for you. You just mentioned some sort of easements. Am I one of the seven you haven't talked?
No, you're on the east side, so we don't need to worry about a trail or anything there.
All right. So I had a chance to talk with Isaac Wannabe on Friday. He's the one that's gonna help me eventually hook, get rid of my septic system and hook up to the sewer. That, I don't have a tough curfew with that, though, right? Since my sewer system is, or septic system is six years old?
Correct. You would have until four years.
Okay. I don't think I'll take that long, but thanks for that. One of the things, he is working also with my neighbor, and I don't know if he's working with the engineers, but there's a way to place, not only where, but height for the stub. Is that gonna be part of what you guys or the engineers do when they...
What our staff is out there is meeting with residents to say, where do you want your service to come to? Meaning, where are you gonna come out of your house to that point? And then what we do is we keep it low coming off the main. So it, right now, probably in front of your place, it's around 17 feet deep.
Right.
We will keep it low as we can, still maintaining pipe grade, and then we will come up
Okay.
Your property so that, and we'll come up within two feet of the surface and leave a little steel pin that they can find in the future. So then when Isaac comes and does it,
Right.
He finds your pipe, and he can intercept the pipe wherever you want, put the bend chop in.
And I suppose you know, gas signs, electric lines, internet, there's all that stuff there that'll all be taken care of and thought of.
Well, so what we would like to do is, in the situations where there are a lot of utilities in those areas, if proprietors wanna grant us an additional five or 10 feet to go under their property to extend the sub to get past all of that stuff, we'll work with them. So that, you know, our goal is to make it when you hook into it, you're just hooking into the pipe and not having to deal with other stuff.
Yeah. Well, all that stuff should be in the easements that's there anyway, not...
It's within the right-of-way, right. But it might be right near the edge of the right-of-way, and getting a few more feet in might be beneficial.
Then you wanna know that till you dig into it, right?
Right. They have to kinda expose. They have a good idea where their utilities are, but they're always a little unsure of the depth.
Okay. All right. So I've got a little pain with the connection fee for a commercial property, and I'm sure there's a robust statistical analysis that got to that number. But all normal curves have tails, and I'm pretty sure I'm way back on one of those tails. Is there any review or concession process for that $9,200?
No, I'll answer that. No, no, there's not. And the reason there's not is there wasn't the first time around, and we're trying to compare this to the first time around.
Okay, I understand.
So, you know, I mean, when we went down, if it was commercial, it was 4,000 at the time, or five, or whatever the commercial was.
Sure.
55. And so what we've done today is we've adjusted 55 to today's dollars. That's how we come up with the 9,200. So we're paying what was fair 20 years ago, or however long. And there weren't any adjustments in, and we can't get into that pond.
Okay, I understand. They had to ask.
I knew you would.
Knew I'd ask, or you'd understand.
Go ahead.
Okay. So then, so there will be a meter that will determine what kind of water is...
If you have commercial, yeah. The city will provide a meter, and they will read it. Monthly, you read it, right?
The city provides the meter, and the business, it needs to get that hooked up.
They hook it up. Does the city read it, or do they ask them?
The city reads it, yep.
So we're gonna hook up a meter to every commercial business?
That's what the city does.
Huh. And who pays for the meter? The city or the person?
City pays for the meter. They pay to plummet in...
Is that a hundred dollars, a thousand dollars, a million dollars? How much is that?
I don't know what it is.
237 bucks last time I did one.
Really? Okay, well, that sounds like funny. I think that's it. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Dave.
Lee Fisher, 37133, Conroe 66. Irrigation heads along the back of the sidewalk, who pays for those when they get damaged? You guys would be, I'm assuming, tearing out the walk, right?
We'll give you a heads up. If the irrigation heads are on private property, we'd want you to try and move them. If we impact them, we'd have our contractor fix them. If they're in the right-of-way, they shouldn't be in the right-of-way.
So how far behind the blacktop path is right-of-way? What's considered right-of-way?
I think that the, it varies along there. At your place, I think the right-of-way is like a foot behind the blacktop.
Okay.
I think it's that close. But then as you get further towards Daggett Pine, it actually goes like 12 or so feet back.
All right. And then the driveways, who makes the final call on where they're gonna cut these driveways at? Is that you guys, or we do it together?
We should do it together. And actually, I've already told Andy to work with you in terms of trying to find the right spot. The point being there that if we can find a spot that's close to where really the disruption is, it makes sense, we wanna do that. If you want us to try and take it all the way back up and chase it up to your garage, we probably have differences there.
Okay. And then what about the boring? I mean, there's a lot of people in this room who are questioning the boring, and I talked to people today about the boring as well. And we got some situations with trees and a lot of landscape. Are we gonna get somebody on board that will work with all the people down the road so we can maybe cut some costs? I know, Dave, you had mentioned you had a name, but are we gonna try to put something together where people can have a meeting with this guy, and he can meet everybody at the same time? And then we gotta orchestrate this with the road crew to try to figure out how we're gonna hook the boring machine up to get to the house? Because right now, it's a big mystery. But I don't wanna backhoe my front yard. I just don't want it. So how are we gonna address this so we don't have everybody's house, including mine, tore up from the house to the road? I'm the shortest one probably on that road. So, I mean, I think you guys should help us put that together to get a boring company to help us out with that. That's just my opinion. And let us not, let us be on our own little island, but you guys need to orchestrate this thing. Because somebody in the room's called two of your contractors on the list so far, they haven't returned their calls yet. And they're busier now. This is spring. The people you've got on that list are busy doing, getting out the gate in the spring. So if they can't get to those people, who are they gonna call next? And I guess is the bigger question. I mean, we gotta try to help everybody here in, at, on the road.
So if you want us to try and find you, find names of people that do boring, that can be done. Are we gonna orchestrate where you're gonna do boring and how it's gonna be done? No. That's your responsibility and your problem.
Well, I think it's your guys' too, so we can kinda work it together going down the street. At least that's what I think. It should be kind of a...
We'll coordinate with you where your service is going to be. You have to have a plan of how you're gonna get to that service.
I understand that. But they can't come through and finish the whole project and say, now the boring guy comes in and, because it's gotta go before the sidewalk goes in, correct?
You're boring?
The boring. Should be done before the sidewalk goes in.
Right. You better do it that way. It would cost you less that way.
I'm sorry?
It will cost you less if you do it that way.
But should the curb and the sidewalk should wait till when boring's are done and hooked up, right? You won't do it that way.
Well, not if some people are, have five-year-old septic, and they're not gonna do it for five more years.
Okay, then they, then that's, I don't care about them at that point.
So what's gonna happen is they have, that pipe that they put in the ground has to sit for 30 days.
So they can test. Yeah, I know.
Right. So they can test and do their man drilling stuff.
Okay.
But anytime after that 30 days, they're probably gonna start pushing hard towards getting their curb in and getting their class five on the road, getting their pavement done on the road. So you have a window to go in there and go and try and get your pipe in. And if it's already in and we're coming by, then that's easy. If you're on the first end of it, you might be getting hooked up, you know, after the, we're already passed, you'll come back and get it done. But that's what the private property owner should be coordinating with your plumber.
But if they put the sidewalk in, and we try to do the boring, and we damage that sidewalk when it's still pretty fresh, that's gonna be a problem. And I'm not gonna pay for it, and I'm not gonna ask the contractor to pay for it. So somehow, we gotta figure this out tonight.
Well, the trail.
We gotta coordinate.
You know what I'm saying? No, Dave, I mean, you guys all, we gotta figure this out. We can't be hell of hostage to try and hook this thing up, because you guys gotta get from one point to the other. We gotta think about the people on the road, too, and that's us.
Right.
So I'm just telling you, I mean, I'm not gonna be happy camp if you guys think you're gonna mow through and then all figure it out later. It ain't gonna happen. I'm telling you right now. So...
So Phil, when they go through and they put the sewer in, and they compact it, they get everything done, now the private person has gotta come in with the backhoe and dig that up to get down to that pipe.
They could do it anytime. They don't have to wait for the contractor to go through. They could put a pipe out to the point they need right now.
But a lot of them are gonna wanna start on the road and push the pipe into the house. I mean...
Why?
So you don't tear sidewalks and driveways and landscaping and all kinds of stuff.
Well, the contractor's not gonna leave a hole open indefinitely for private property owners to get their...
You gotta bore from the road in to the house.
You can work from the house down.
How you gonna do that when I got a porch where my cleanout is? I can't do that.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to meet on this.
I mean, as far as...
Can I ask a question? How many people in this room are doing boring versus do, the front yard on the back?
We did boring, and it's the only way to go.
Does anybody care how they get their yard looks when they're done?
I think the boring's a great idea.
It is a good idea.
Okay, well, so I'm not the only person.
But how did you bore? How did you bore? Did you, how did you bore?
Scott, how did you bore?
How'd you bore? Did you bore from the road in, or did you bore?
From the business, under the highway, to behind town square.
Oh, so not on this project. You've bored before?
No, I did this on...
I thought somebody had done it on this project already.
My other question is the dust control.
Right.
And nobody's asked it, but I'm gonna, how, what are they gonna do for dust control?
Water.
They're gonna keep up with that pretty much?
They say they are. They're required in the contract to water. Keep dust down. It won't, it'll still get dusty at times.
But they are gonna water truck on site?
Yep.
Okay. All right. So we're gonna address this boring thing and timing and things like that? We're gonna try to figure that out?
We're gonna keep you abreast of the project. We're gonna work with you to say where you want us to bring your service to, and we can give you names of boring people. I don't know any other than the one you told me about earlier, and then apparently Dave has one.
Okay.
But no, the city is not going on everyone's property to figure out where their service is going.
So when you come off the road, if I'm down 42 inches at my house with my cleanout going to my septic system, they're gonna run a pipe at an angle, we're just gonna cut it off where we can make the height work? Or how are they gonna adjust that? Because they're gonna have a riser in there somewhere. We're not going down...
The riser's gonna come up at your property line.
Okay.
And you'll be able, it'll come straight up, and you'll be able to pick it off wherever you want.
Okay, so it'll be down.
Yep, whatever height you need, or whatever height you want.
Well, how, what if some people don't know what their height is, and all of a sudden they got a problem because of back pitch? How does that work? I mean, some people on that road, I don't know where they're gonna be at. How do you guys assess that height out of the house?
Well, depending on how deep the main is, you've got 10 feet.
Depending on what your elevation come out of your house.
Our main is being put as flat as it can be, and anywhere between Daggett, between the, where it's starting and Daggett Pine, it'll be 16 or deeper, 16 feet or deeper.
Okay, all right. And there's no other costs that are hidden besides this $5,500 for residential hookups?
Private hookup.
55 bucks a month for the user fee?
Yep, 55, right?
Yep, and then your connection cost.
And if you pay early, do you get a discount? If you pay cash, check?
Sure, what would you like?
Pay early?
15% off. All right. So there's no savings to pay early?
No.
All right.
So Phil, I would kind of suggest or recommend that when they start digging, there's gonna be 23 Lee Fishers out there on the side of the road bugging this contractor. Guaranteed.
Well, and we've told the contractor that, we've said it in the pre-construction meeting, that you can take on work with every one of these individuals if you would like, but you can't jeopardize the city's project timeframe.
Do we wait until they're in front of each one of the houses to address that, or should we have a, try to get a feeling before they get going down the line? A coordinating feeling, you know?
So we've sent out letters letting people know they can contact our staff to try and coordinate where we will bring the sanitary sewer.
I understand that. I'm more worried about the other side of the fence, the contractor. How do we communicate with him?
Communicate what with him?
Access to get the pipe in the ground. Availability, when's a good time? Or just let them go by and then go dig it back up?
So you realize we're putting the city's sewer in the road?
Right.
And services to the property lines. That's what our contractor's hired to do.
I understand that. I understand that. But we're also putting storm in, so we're gonna come in to put the storm in. Storm's no more than five feet down. There's gotta be a time and there's someplace that makes it as easy for these people to hook up as can be.
And that period is from now until July 1 is when the contractor has indicated they're gonna have the first phase done. I think they have more time than that, because I don't think we're gonna do the trail right of way. We're trying to get the road back done. The trail will be the last thing done, and the driveway ties in. But...
So what you're saying is they could bore to their road right now?
Right now.
And you would hook in or...
If they bore to the point, and we came by, we could hook in right now.
Scott, if you're gonna talk, you gotta come up and identify yourself, or don't talk. Either way. But you can't keep bantering from out there. Thank you. You could come up here and describe it very carefully, but, okay? Well, somehow, we're gonna have to get a hold of the contractor.
So we can hook up, we can dig, get a hole up, right now from the house, out to the road right now?
You could put the pipe there.
And then when they come by, they'll hook up my pipe then?
When they go by, they can either coordinate with your plumber, or you can ask them if they'll hook it, and they could hook it, but you still have to make the hookup from...
At the house.
Because right now, you're going to a septic system.
But if I have it at the house, out to the road, will you guys hook it up at the road then? Is that what I'm understanding?
You could ask the contractor to do that, since they're coming by.
Well, then that would be the best way to do it.
It would, but you gotta dig an eight-foot-deep hole, 10 feet long and 10 feet wide in order to get a boring machine down there to stick the pipe in. I mean, that's just what you gotta do.
But if the path is gone and the curb's gone, we could do that, right?
Yeah, yeah. I know, but...
You could, you could...
I'm confused. Can I do it before you guys come through and make a total mess of things? Can I do that?
Lee, I would not count on the contractor doing the actual connection, because they're gonna wanna roll as fast as they can. Ask them. I'd encourage you to ask them.
When do we get this contractor's, a contact from the contractor? Are we gonna deal with that any year? We got your guy.
It's in your paper that's in your hand. It's right there. Do you see the phone number for Casper on the front? So this is the information we've been trying to get out to property owners. Right in the front page, in the text.
Okay, who's next?
I forgot something.
Come on up. Say your name and... We got two hours here, Dave.
My name is Charles Paceau. I live at 12896 Rushmore Boulevard. And I'm glad this is an information meeting instead of a assessment meeting. And I just wanted to, came here on the original intent of assessment. As a resident, I'm against any kind of assessment. For the businessman's support, I'm against any kind of assessment. And the other issue, I think the timing is all wrong. It should be done later, and that's my input for what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. All right, Dave, come on up.
Dave Gahn, 37148, Conroe 66. I forgot to talk about access. And I was encouraged to see the sign that said local access will be available. But I'm just curious, we talked, I think I can expect a few hours some days that maybe access will be limited, but not days, right?
Correct.
And then for, at least my business, I need to be able to pull, you know, 24-foot pontoons in and out?
Yep.
Is that gonna be a constraint? Is it, most any kind of vehicle can do that?
The contractor has indicated that they're gonna make it accessible by property owners. It's not gonna be like the road today. I don't even think it's gonna be like a very well-packed gravel road, but it will be accessible.
Okay. And then how about, right now, I put my garbage out on 66?
Correct.
Has...
So the contractor's responsibility is to work with the garbage company
Okay.
On pickup days. I don't know what arrangements they're made. What I've seen in talking with the contractor, they've said they've done in the past, they ask the property owners to put their house number on their garbage cans and to let them know when the garbage pickup is. I don't know if the city has multiple garbage vendors or just one. But then what they do is they take their loader, they take your garbage. You put your garbage out like you usually would. They take it up to a drop-off point that they've arranged with the garbage hauler. They get dumped, they bring them back at the end of the day. As long as there's some form of identification on there, they can put it back on your property. Post offices, mailboxes are put at a location, kinda at the front of the...
Post offices, uh, mailboxes are put at a location, um, kinda at the front of the project or, but they will, the post office won't come into the project site.
Okay, great. That was it? Thanks very much.
Yep, thanks, Dave. Who's next?
Mister Mayor, members of the council, my name is Steve Baker, three seven four four one, County Road, right across from sixty-six Marine. Um, I just wanted to take this opportunity to say thanks to Phil and Andy for coming out and showing some real personal attention to our place. Um, they went over pretty much everything. Um, the one thing, the conflict is gonna be the boring. And it appears to me that, uh, the boring machine on our property is gonna have to be done from the road. So they'll have to make arrangements to talk to the contractor and put their machine on that road and start digging there.
Yeah.
It won't take very long. Two or three hours maybe, four at the most. But that's appears to be what's gonna happen.
That's why we need to get what the, you know, it's gonna be just as they go by and it'd be nice to have it organized before.
Yep, and the other conflict with our property, I think our property was one of the highest ones along the road. It goes up. And, uh, the walking path is at an angle. So then our driveway has to be adjusted, cause it's got an incline, has to be adjusted to bring it down to the path. And, uh, Andy explained how they're gonna do it and, uh, I think it'll turn out just fine. So I think our biggest problem is just coordinating the boring and I know our, my neighbor wants to do boring, a lot of trees to go under and, um, that's what we plan on doing.
I've got the name of a guy who said he would be available all the way down the road line as long as he could get there.
Yeah, I've talked to a couple already and, um, uh, cesspool guy, remove it and, uh, the drilling guy. And they'll hook it all up, so it sounds pretty good.
Dave, maybe you can share the name of the boring company with everyone here.
I will, absolutely. Get your pencil out if you want it.
Yep, I mean.
Yeah, this guy was gonna try to talk to Phil and whoever, but his name is Joe Zakowski.
Yeah, that's the same one I heard.
Is it?
Yep, Joe.
Joe Zakowski.
Does he have a company name or is?
Zakowski's Drilling.
Service.
Yeah.
I think he's up by Emily or somewhere in there. I don't, I'm just guessing. Do you have a card?
Yep, phone number, two one eight, eight two one, four zero zero nine.
If we can make a copy of that card, we can include it with our next update?
Yeah.
So that everyone has it as well.
He just, he said he would be available and, I don't.
Yeah, he sounded like a good guy. He came out right away after we called. Andy was out. Then we called him the next day. He came out on a Sunday and he kinda looked it all over and from my neighbors and our site, it appears that the machine has to be in the road.
Why is, why is that? I'm curious.
There's not enough room up by the house. Our lot is kinda narrow.
Mm-hmm.
And there's just not enough room. Uh, like Dave said, that machine takes, it's probably ten feet long.
Yeah, but the machine starts at grade, drills down to the depth you wanna hook up at and then comes up. I mean, and they could ju- control how it does it, but it needs distance to do it.
Yeah, it needs some.
And it's a machine. It's ten, twelve feet long, so a backhoe could lift it up, set it in the trench, pop the hole in there, pull it out of there, he's gone.
Yep.
I mean, that, it could work that easy, but it needs cooperation to do that.
Yep.
And that's what we gotta try to figure out.
Thanks.
Yeah, he's got a hook on that machine. They could hook it, swing it down, drop it in, drill the hole, dig the next line, come back, pull them out and, you know. We just gotta all get along. Who's next? Good, a thirty-five-minute meeting. I love it.
One thing that just.
No, come on up. I'm just kidding. Come on up.
Just to address the, the comment that we did here though, uh, and, and I get it, people want this project to happen later because there's a finite window of time to enjoy Cross Lake and the businesses to thrive in Cross Lake. But the, but the reality is, is Minnesota doesn't give you a big construction season to get this work done. And there's a lot of things that are gonna happen on this project. As we've stated before, we've given the contractor sixty-five working days to get this project done. We thought it could be get done in sixty working days. Well, working days is different than calendar days. Working days are Monday through Friday. Now, we can tell the contractor to come in on Saturdays. Typically contractors don't come in on Saturdays unless they're getting behind. It's also kind of a, a, if you will call it bittersweet idea to say, let's have a contractor come in on Saturdays and Sundays and really get this thing done. Well, now you've just, uh, put every weekend in the summer with backup, uh, you know, horns and things like that and dust. So sixty working days is three calendar months. The contract, the county wants their road paved completely by October fifteenth. You work that back, you could start this in the middle of July or early July. Is that any better? I don't think it's any better.
That ship is sailed.
It's a necessary evil in Minnesota. You're gonna have construction up here in this segment of road that doesn't have much baggage, you know, much detour opportunity. It's just, you know.
Yep.
It's a generational inconvenience right now.
Mark?
Okay, Mark Linder, one six five four three Pine Lure Drive. And I got a little bit of a buildup before I get into what I'm actually gonna talk about, but this gets into assessing. And I live on a private road. When I bought my property, the owner of the road, we asked him why the city wasn't taking over the road. Said the city won't do it. They wanna charge up to half a million dollars to do it. And he said, I won't let them do it. Um, back in the old days, they would've, but he, back then, he said, I wouldn't let them do it because, um, our road goes over and basically dead ends into Daggett Brook, Daggett Creek. It's right across from Wilderness Park and he said they wanna put a bridge through and I don't want the traffic going straight across here. I thought he was crazy. I thought he was nuts. Until I got involved with the city, got on planning and zoning and sure enough, I read it in the two thousand eight comp plan when I got involved with planning and zoning and all prior ones that all talked about, they wanted to put a bridge across that river. And I thought this guy's crazy. He was not. So I understood why he didn't want the city to put a road in for us back in the day. But now the city has told the owner of the road and we all as neighbors pay for plowing for the snow, for maintenance of the road, for the class five, everything. City won't do it. They'd assess us half a million dollars. So here I'm looking at this. Now I'll get into what I'm talking about. Um, this is gonna be no assessment to these property owners. I'm the one here that is up here that's not living on sixty-six or one of them. I look at it and say, I'm a taxpayer in Cross Lake. I put in my septic system. I spent what it was back in the day and now it's gonna cost, if mine's twenty-five years old or older, it's gonna cost me another twenty grand to put it in, whatever. I understand that. But here's people coming in and the city has decided to charge them, uh, whatever your fee is fifty-five hundred. You took an amount that was paid back in two thousand six and said, okay, that's what inflation would be. I don't understand, cause the businesses got a different rate at the increase than the residential. I don't know why. But I just was looking at the numbers. I'm a retired accountant. Um, but here's, the point is, you picked a number from four, from two thousand six and said, that's what we're gonna charge for hookup. I don't know if that's a reasonable number. What is the cost of doing it? Isn't that what should be looked at? And then you're saying that back in two thousand six, there was no assessment to anybody in the city that got the city water. Just because they made that decision and that maybe it called a mistake back then, doesn't mean you don't do it now. I'm saying, why would I as a taxpayer wanna pay for a hundred percent? Uh, all the taxpayers pay up for a hundred percent of everybody who gets property value increases and use of the city sewer. I don't think that's proper. I'm not saying, I know there's one, I read all this stuff, there's one person that owns, uh, very lot of the roadway, a large percentage, they get charged eighty thousand. That's crazy. I understand that. But every property owner should be charged maybe five thousand, maybe ten thousand for the assessed value. I don't understand why the city is saying there's no assessment for any of this and it all has to be picked up by me and other taxpayers who get no benefit.
Do you feel the same about the tennis courts? You don't know why you should have to pay for the tennis courts?
I don't know. You can talk to me about tennis courts or you can talk to me about the new cons, that's going in, the new playground for the kids.
This council has beat this up for a long time, back and forth. The, the, the majority of the citizens agree that it is a regional benefit. Everybody benefits from this. The people on the line still are paying something, um, but we're gonna relieve them of the assessment portion of it.
Yeah, and that's where I don't understand.
Okay, I, I, and there's, you're not alone.
I'm, I'm a taxpayer and I don't understand. I get, where's the benefit I get from this? I'm never gonna have sewer put into my road. I live four miles from downtown. I'm on a private road that you guys won't take over, that you've refused.
No, Mark, we will take it over, but the policy in the city is for, no, well, whatever it costs for you to bring it up to city standards and the city will then take it over. That's been the policy forever in town.
They've already told us, they'll assess it, that, us, that half a million dollars.
No, you'll pay for it. You'll pay for the whole thing.
That's right.
But you have to bring it up to city standards. That's the policy of the city. Anybody who puts a road in, that's what they have to do. Your road, that's what he had to do.
No.
Yeah.
Dave Schrupps' road, they got the city to pay for that.
No.
Yes.
Builder, the builder did it.
The builder did it. He had to bring it up to city standards. That's the policy.
I heard it was paid for by the city.
No, it's not, but I get it, your point. You're not alone, so.
I just don't feel it's proper to just say, okay, all this assessment, one hundred percent is gonna go to all the taxpayers. I think a portion of that, and I'm not saying like that one person eighty thousand, I'm saying five or ten thousand dollars should've been added. They're getting property value increases. I'm not. Um, they're getting a benefit from this. I'm not. I'm always gonna have to have my septic pumped. I'm gonna have this, that and the other. I just don't understand the decision that was made that says, okay, no assessment. And I'm not saying it should be a huge amount, but something reasonable that they pay their share, a little bit of it, a portion. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Just one thing, the detour.
Name?
Can you?
Name?
Lee Fisher.
Sorry.
Can you explain the detour to, I don't understand the detour. Where it's gonna come at by sixty-six Marine down to Moonlight. Can you guys explain how the detour's gonna work so we all, I don't understand it.
Well, it's.
Do you wanna do it?
Sure.
Okay.
Um, actually originally when we put these plans together with city staff and the county, we, uh, tended to only have one dedicated detour and that was to, uh, take one oh three over to West Shore Drive up to sixteen and back to sixty-six. Um, we did not wanna put, uh, traffic into the neighborhoods to the, uh, east of you, behind Log Landing and stuff like that. Um, we figured that most of the locals, people around here already kinda knew that and would figure out that, uh, short track. And if anyone has a, a phone, they can do Google and figure out which way they're going. Uh, but based on the information we got, uh, the response we got from people at the meeting last week or two weeks ago, we now are dedic, detouring and we're, uh, signing it. The detour would go up Daggett Bay Road, uh, Brook Street. I don't know what, what's it, Lumberjack and then Miller to, uh, Daggett Pine or Community Center Road.
So we had to fire off?
And actually that map, I believe, is on the city website.
There are maps in the, outside.
On the table as well. Do you know where I'm talking?
And hopefully when we get up to the second phase, there'll be a lane.
There'll be a what?
A lane.
Not for the public. For emergency vehicles.
So then you'll have to detour around.
No, not local traffic. For emergency vehicles.
Okay.
We can't introduce local traffic into a dig site. We don't have the room. Now, if the, if the, if there's the ability to work with Moonlight, uh, to skirt through their parking lot, which I would, if I were them, I'd be concerned about, um, otherwise, no, we, there, there is no local traffic option.
So that second phase will be probably more of an inconvenience.
Correct. It is shallower, which is good, which allows us to get emergency vehicles by there. But it is not a traffic route for the public.
Less hookups, shallower digs, should go fast, you know? Hopefully it'll just move along and get done. Who's next?
William Solly, three six nine six seven Brook Street. As you route that around there, that road is not gonna hold up.
No, it won't.
We know that.
I'm afraid of that. I'm afraid of the visibility. I'm afraid of the, uh, width.
Visibility's terrible.
Afraid of the pets and the kids.
Okay.
Um, I know that we're, uh, putting up signs that, uh, trying to slow speeds. I think the police chief has an idea that he might be bringing to the council about some other, um.
No, we're aware of it. They don't, but.
We're gonna try to make the best of it.
They already added a patch on the curve now and I mean, you get any size trucks through their trailers, it's gonna just tear it right up.
Yeah, we're, we're really hoping to intercept the through traffic and the trucks to take the detour out around the lake. But we can't solve stupid.
It's bad enough on Sunday mornings with people leaving for church even, so I mean.
Yeah.
I hear, I hear you, so.
Thank you.
Yep. Who's next?
Doug Oster, one three six zero zero, County Road sixteen. Trying to get a picture of how that, if you're coming up sixteen from the wharf, you won't be able to go right to the, take a right at near sixty-six or Moonlight, uh, uh, restaurant. You won't be able to take a right there for a period of time to go down to the.
Until July first, you will be able to. Until July first.
Okay, and then after July first.
After that, it's gonna be difficult, yeah. Then you're gonna wanna go around the other.
I would say that when they get into the second phase, which is Community Center Road up to sixteen, um, just think of that, tha- that stretch there when they're actually digging the pipe in. They're not only digging along the road, then they have to dig each way to tie in services. I think when they're digging that period of time, and again, we pointed out, it is shallower, so that's good. Um, hopefully they can bang through that and then when they're back to kinda building the road, doing the curbs, um, or, uh, putting the gravel on and stuff, there might be an opportunity there for have some type of public. You know, when we're not sending you next to a hole, that's different. But there will be a period of time, just won't be possible. So if you're coming up sixteen, you're gonna wanna head back the other way and come across on.
So let's say you wanted to go to the Moonlight Restaurant. It, will they be completely closed off?
Get in your boat.
No, you can, you can go to six, no, access, uh, access, uh, sixteen is to be open all the time. And I think that, um, you have a good chance of being able to get to Moonlight, but for one day.
Oh, okay, okay.
Or get in your boat.
Otherwise you have to go up to one.
Otherwise, yeah, I mean, if, 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 i- if you, uh, and who knows, maybe there'll be, uh, temporary entrance made where they'll be able to skirt by it right off of sixteen and go in there. Uh, people get pretty creative when they wanna stay open for business.
Yeah, yeah, I feel, yeah, bad for.
I think Moonlight will be the least closed out of everyone, cause I'm pretty sure everyone knows how to get there to get a drink, so.
Well, yeah, yeah, or they'll just go somewhere else. I hope not, but.
Well, I, I don't think so. I think.
Okay. And the gas station will have access?
If you find a good spot, call me and let me know.
Gas station will be. Access to the gas station will, will be. It just, you might not come up and turn in that first one. You might actually have to go around it.
Okay, okay. As far as bicycling down that path, will that be closed most of the summer too?
Yeah, that, that path.
Definitely.
That's gonna be probably where we're gonna hear a lot of complaints. That path is not gonna be there.
Okay, okay, all right, thanks.
Anybody else?
I'll just explain all that boring goes. My name's Scott Seemers, three five seven two four, County Road three. No part of the main street issue here. So the boring, how the boring works, when they did it at our car wash, they set the machine up was maybe ten feet long. They do not dig a ten-foot by ten-foot hole like you had mentioned. It's on top of the ground, the directional bore, they steer that with a computer. You're familiar with this. Goes directly, whether they do it from the road or from your home, either way, there's gonna be damage up by your house because they have to dig to connect to the house. So I just want you guys all to be aware of that. I mean, you're, no hidden costs. Um, I think what you need to do is set up a meeting like Lee says, get everybody together that wants a directional bore. Go over it with them, get some numbers, get some facts. See where you're at. I don't want these people to come and all of a sudden be shocked, cause I know what it costs. It's not cheap. Um, another question. The water treatment, is it capable to hold all this capacity? I mean, my understanding is that our treatment plant is, needs a lot of improvement. Is there any truth to that?
No, it's fine. It's good shape. Right now it's about sixty percent, I believe.
So, yeah, we're running about fifty percent of capacity, um, on average.
But didn't, a couple meetings ago, you mentioned that it needed like a half a million dollars?
Well, it always will. It always will.
But I mean, does it need it now?
It's twenty years old now. It needs some.
Does it need it now?
It's scheduled to have some clarifiers. It's already being, uh, planned. It's already being, uh, planned and budgeted in, in, it should be starting.
I just don't want these people to be shell-shocked to say all of a sudden our water treatment plant needs a million dollars' worth of improvements.
Well, but, and we can't do it till winter, when the, when everybody, this summer, they can't shut anything down.
I'm looking out for my friends in the community. I mean, I, I just want these guys to be aware, when they go to hook up, it's not as simple as you guys are making it sound.
Yeah, well, but it's, it's, it's in the process. Thanks, Scott. Okay. All right. Any other sewer plant questions? Come on up.
My name's Dean Wright. I live across the street from the fire department, three-seven-zero-five-one, County Road sixty-six. I'm not sure if I understood you correctly. You're gonna put the road in first and then go back and do the sidewalk?
So, yeah, the, the, the road will get done first by the contractor, and I think the, and the reason I think the, uh, sidewalk or the trail's gonna go last is because it's two different botuminous mixes.
Well, what about the curb and gutter?
The curb and gutter will go in first before the pavement on the road.
Well, before the pavement of the road?
Yeah, typically, you put the curb and gutter in first, and then you pave the road.
Okay, very good, thank you.
The reason the trail, I think, just to let you know, it's a different-
Pardon?
The, the county's using a worm mix for the road, so they're gonna batch up a lot of that stuff, and the, the stuff on the trails, regular blacktop. It's, it can be done separately.
Okay. And one other question, you mentioned fifty-five dollars for a commercial. What about residential?
Fifty-five residential, ninety-two hundred commercial.
Oh, okay. All right, very good, thank you.
Yep.
William Solley, again. One quick question. Are they gonna get the wear course on too this fall?
Yes.
So it'll all be taken care of?
Yeah, so what we're doing is, um, we're doing just the base course, when they do the first phase, and then the base course in the second phase, and then they'll do the final at the same time, probably late-
Is that a six-inch bait, or six-inch total blacktop through the hotel then, or what?
Uh, I, I don't know. I don't know if it's four or six inches of blacktop. I don't know, but it's the same.
So in other words, they'll put the base course, course in first, and then the wear course will all be in final by this fall?
Yeah, by, by the end of August.
You good? Come on up.
Dave gone, one, I don't know, three-seven-one-four-eight, County Road sixteen-six. So I just heard about the monthly fee for the sewer hookup. This says it's fifty-five dollars for the first eight thousand gallons a month?
Yep.
But not the ninety or a hundred, you just?
Well, if, you're not gonna go over eight thousand gallons.
No, I, I won't. You're right, but you're, you're saying other commercial properties could likely see-
Moonlight Bay Restaurant will probably have ten or twelve connection charges.
Right, I understand, okay. That was my question. Thanks very much.
Yep. Going once? Going twice? Come on.
Name is Steve Hells, as I live over in Velvet Lake, one-seven-five-one-nine, County Road thirty-six. Uh, I'm not very familiar with what's going on here. Uh, has assessments been set for everybody in the city?
No.
How are you gonna assess property that is second, like, second-tier property to the lake, uh, and there's nothing on it?
Steve, we don't, we're not gonna assess the cities, this, all the citizens, but it is gonna go on our property taxes. That is gonna be, oh, now, the percentage of what you pay in property taxes is gonna be the percentage of what you pay for this project. So an example of that, if you pay two thousand bucks in property taxes, your taxes, according to this project right here, will go up by forty-eight dollars next year, okay?
So you're not, you're not gonna do it like you did on Sleepy Valley Road, charge me for four lots that, for wood, 'cause there was, you know, six acres, so you charged me for four lots?
Well, you're, are you talking about road assessment or sewer?
No, for the sewer. I mean, we, I, I'm under the impression everybody's paying for it.
You're gonna be paying for it based on what you pay in property taxes, and there's a formula to figure out what that is.
So that just keeps increasing every year?
True.
And how about the separate acreage? I mean, I've got one on the lake, and then the six acres is separate, and yet I have an easement, uh, you know, it's six acres, but I have somebody that's using part of that acreage. How did they figure that out?
Why are they using it?
Well, 'cause they built there years ago on the property line, and now he's put a garage there, and he's trying to tell me I can't stop him from getting to his garage, and he's using my property.
Hmm, you'll charge him.
I can't. He won't do nothing. He's renting VRBOs, you know. And I've got eight cars parking down there on my property.
Well, no, what he's doing is more than what you're doing.
Oh, no.
Maybe you need to do a little more.
I've hired two lawyers now. I've hired two lawyers in the city, in the police and everything for that.
Well, that's unfortunate.
So if you're, if you're going, I don't know, what'd the paper say? You said, what, thirty-five cents a foot and seven thousand dollars for each one?
Well, that's a square foot. See, that was the sewer assessment, and so if you had a four-acre lot, we were, and you were commercial, it was thirty-five cents a foot, and that's where the assessment was getting up to eighty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Crazy. That's why we couldn't do it. That's why we said we're not gonna do it.
So are you, would you assess that property along Sleepy Valley Road then?
Well, if it's in the city limits across lake, it's, it's not gonna be an assessment. They're gonna pay a portion of it on their property taxes, but it's not an assessment. There's not gonna be any, you're not gonna know anything about it. And hopefully, next year-
So the next-door neighbor's got twenty acres, and he's not gonna notice it?
Hopefully, you're not gonna notice it, yeah. Hopefully, you're not gonna-
Just like it says on the, here, just go do it and worry about it later.
Yeah, well, it's gonna, I mean, we are all gonna collectively pay for it. The city is gonna pay for it.
Yeah, I think, that's one thing, I think I'm, you know, I might have six acres, but if somebody else is using part of it, uh, as an easement. He has an easement there.
You've got some issues that we can't touch here.
Nobody wants to touch here. All right, thank you very much.
Thanks. All right, who's next?
I guess I have something to say.
Sure.
Um, since we can't seem to get away from past practice, and we're going to continue not assessing, I was wondering about the connection fees then. Um, I just found out last Friday, talking to the city administrator, uh, what, uh, the restaurants in the first phase paid for connection fees, and I'm wondering why we're not doing the same thing, since we're not assessing, because we didn't assess before, why we're, um, establishing a new connection fee for the restaurants. I'm sure that the, uh, oh, well, Mike, the, uh, the restaurants along, uh, sixty-six, how many connections do they pay?
Charles, correct me if I misspeak, but I believe the restaurants were charged one connection.
Riverside one, Andy's one, Pine Peaks one, Zorbas one, and now we're at, like, ten connections.
And that was a deviation from our policy at that time, too.
And then how, how did it work with the, how come the hotels paid so many? Because they paid multiple connection charges?
It was based on the number of rooms.
So I think if we're not assessing, because we didn't assess before, we should be charging-
One connection?
One connection. All's fair.
Mine won't, yeah.
Well, the hotel paid, or the senior high-rise paid.
Before you stay home.
I think we have been following, following the policy.
We've been following the policy since then.
So the senior high-rise, depending on the number of rooms.
They paid higher.
They paid high. Everybody has paid since the original time. The only thing is, the assessment and the connection fee are completely different. Why they did what they did, I don't know, but we have been following our policy for years.
Right, in oh-four, when I first went in, that's when Zorbas, that's when they had one connection, I, I think, but in oh-six, I think maybe that changed, but maybe there wasn't a restaurant. Well, it changed, I know, for, uh, for the high-rise, I know it changed for the school. Right. There's a number of them that it changed for, so the policy's been there.
Just the school and the apartments.
Yeah, I think it was more than just those two, but-
I'm just saying, you know, you're talking about the, you know, past practice and no assessments and-
Well, a more recent past practice is Scott's car wash. I think you paid ten grand, even though you say you paid ninety grand for it, but I-
Were you paying attorney fees and all?
I don't care about your attorney fees, but-
Scott Seamers paid sixty-five hundred for a hookup fee.
Okay.
Okay, for your car wash. So now we're talking about the car wash out here.
We're not talking about any of that, but-
Oh, we're not, okay.
How many years ago? Is that like ten? Five, six, something? Recent. So that's a real valid point, and, yeah, we should talk more about that. We don't need to do it in this meeting, but we should definitely consider it.
I think we have to discuss it.
Right now?
Well, I think I would let the, I would let the, uh, restaurants and the car wash know if they're gonna be charged ten, fifteen connections, or one, like everybody else.
Yeah, well. Aaron, you wanna discuss it? What do you got?
You need to look at it. You can't just, uh, make it a random decision like we did the other day. Okay, I want this studied, I wanna look at it, I wanna know what the costs are, and I wanna know how bad people are getting hurt if we go the right way. And I believe, Phil, you talked eighty-five percentile or something like that, uh, the other day.
Right, we said the data that we had collected in two thousand nineteen, you gotta figure out how to use it. If you use it, uh, based on peak, it's not fair to the business owner. If you use it based on average-
But to make a random decision like what, on, like we did with the last one, that's wrong.
I think the, I think the point I'm just gonna make about the sewer connection charge is that it is tied to the treatment plant capacity. Treatment plant has a certain amount of capacity, right?
Mm-huh.
So if that treatment plant has five hundred places, five hundred properties, let's say, that can go in that treatment plant, before we get to the point where you need a new treatment plant, and you're really putting out a lot of money, if you have one property and that gets charged, and another property gets charged, and they have just residential flow, they're taking up seats, that makes sense at the table. If you have a property that's equivalent to fifteen residential units in terms of them, on the flow that it provides, it is taking up fifteen parts of the capacity, but you're charging them for one. The same amount you're charging each residential. Now, you can make that decision. You are going to get rid of your capacity quicker, you're not gonna have captured the dollars to replace the capacity that you gave up. Now, you, it's a decision you can make, but you're not gonna get it in connection charges. You're gonna be back to the general levy taking it out, and if that's how you wanna go forward, you can do that. But that's what your real question is.
Yeah.
Is one one, or is ten one?
I just wonder, when Mr. Seamers put his car wash in five years ago, what, what was the science that went into that? Apparently, not much.
I think the recommendation was to follow the ordinance, but the council doesn't always follow the ordinance. That's a fact.
I'm supposed, sure if I'm supposed to read into that or not?
No, I said it very plainly.
Nor do-
That's your, that's your decision. You can make that, but you don't always follow-
Nor do they follow the assessment policy.
Correct, and that's why you get paid the big bucks.
Yeah.
Did you raise?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, well, Aaron says to put the brakes on and think about it before we make a call. Dave, what's your feeling on it?
Same thing.
Okay.
I think people really need to understand, everybody in the city across lake has been and will continue to pay for the operation of the sewer plant, whether or not you're on it or not. And the people that, like the restaurants, I'm sorry if they use a lot of water, that plant's gotta process a lot of water. And that five hundred thousand dollars that you mentioned, that's for, kinda like shock absorbers. They call it clarifiers in the plant. We can't take 'em down, there's two of them. In the winter months, there's only one that runs, and it's, it's a big tub that clarifies the water, it's all stainless steel, but after twenty years, some of the stainless steel's gone. So the only time they can take it down is in the winter, when they don't need both of them. In the summer, we need both, so it won't get shut down. It was repaired a couple, about a year ago, in the winter months, to get us by.
But that's maintenance.
But every year, we have that type of deal. The motors will go out, lift stations, we're upgrading the lift stations. Gotta put new electronics in 'em, because the stuff that was put in fifteen years ago is outdated. You can't get it anymore, so.
But for the people who want to put the burden of this on the benefiting few that are getting it, they don't have a choice in this coming down the road either. They didn't ask for it. It's just going down the road, and we're making them do it, so if they're benefiting it from it, you know, that's good. A lot of them say they're not. They don't need it, but whatever. It's just kind of a, a animal that you gotta deal with. And we're trying, trying to figure out the fairest way to do it, so.
One other quick question. What is this out here in front of the, is this a lift station that's out here?
On the other side of the road?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's gonna be gravity-fed all the way down to-
I think so, yeah.
So what's the purpose of that lift station there then, for?
Get it up and keep it going down the line.
So they're not gonna-
You get down so deep, then you gotta get it up, so it can gravity down to the next one.
Right, I understand that. So it's gonna free-fall to that point then?
Yeah, I think so, right, Phil?
Right, it's gonna gravity to this lift station out here off of sixty-six and Daggett Pine, be pumped across the bridge, get into the system, and go down to the next station.
Oh, so pumps it from here across the bridge?
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
We have a series of lift stations that get it to the treatment plant, because it can't just go one pipe over.
Right, right, I understand that, but that's still a long ways for free-gravity fed that far.
What do you?
The distance.
Yeah.
Distance, yeah.
Yeah.
You're at your max, aren't you?
Well, we just run out of cover. We could go further.
We can put another tank up there and pump it farther, you know, and you just keep pumping it, but-
That's a cost factor, too.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Every one.
Huge.
That'll be for the next council to figure out.
Well, that's gonna be even.
You're killing me.
Hello?
Hi.
Fred Richter, one-three-eight-oh-three, Edgewater. Part of the original hookup, or sewer system. Um, back then, I used, did the, did Zorbas pay, they only had one hookup? Was it the same as what each res, was there one?
I think they had a commercial hookup, but I believe it was just one.
Okay, commercial, all right. I was just curious, 'cause we have a summer guest cabin, and we had to pay two hookups, but that's, no, that's the way it is.
Yeah, but I, I think the resident was three or four thousand at that time, and the commercial was sixty-five hundred, I believe.
Okay, we paid them, all right. I thought, I'm pretty sure we paid more on that, but that's okay. Um, can I ask a separate question for all this?
Sure.
Is it true about a roundabout being put in?
Have you been-
I mean, is that true? Can we?
Have you been down to the coffee shop?
What's that?
This is an assessment, a public hearing about a sewer project.
All right, well, I-
We don't wanna need to open up any cans of any other worms.
I hope not. My vote would be no, but-
There's a few in Brainerd. There's a few roundabouts in Brainerd. If you just wanna drive over in that neck of the woods, you'll see a lot of them, so.
Keep reading the papers on that, though. That's all I'm gonna say. Come on up, Clay.
I'm gonna say something so I can leave.
Good.
Um, Clay Porter, three-six-four-three-oh, County Road three. All I wanna say is I'm not on the lake, I'm not in the path of this improvement. Uh, I think this is a, for the benefit of the community, I'm happy with the way you've set it up and the attention you've given to it, and so just wanted to show my support for what you're doing.
Thank you, Clay.
Thank you.
Oh, I wish there was more people like him here. All right, who's next?
Justin Patton, three-seven-one-seven-nine, County Road sixty-six, and, um, I just wanted I just wanted to say, you know, I've been following the, the, uh, city council meetings on, on YouTube for the last couple of years, I haven't been able to be here for many of them, but...
I hope we've been entertaining you.
It's, uh, been very entertaining at times, for sure.
Good.
But, um, you know, I, I sense a lot of the frustration that people have been sharing over the last months or so, but it does, I really appreciate that it does sound like you're finally listening, and taking some of that into consideration, it's, I think there's still some issues that need to be addressed. Um, I do have a question, uh, a couple weeks ago, there was a, a discussion from the church in how they were going to handle their parking lot. Is there a, a plan to address their Sunday traffic? I know a couple weeks ago, they were expected to go out the back door. What, what is the plan for that now? So I'm right across from the church, so I guess I'm curious.
It's kind of a moving target still, huh, but I think...
They will have access from the north or the south, depending upon what construction progress is.
Okay, so they'll just come from one direction or the other?
So what, we have, uh, added signage that indicates for the businesses within the construction area, including the church, um, arrows that will direct people on how to get to there, you know? Um, if you can picture it, when the, the hole's south of you, um, you're going to have to go around, and we're going to have arrows that direct people around, but then once it goes past the church, past you, coming from the south, the arrow will just tell them to continue on sixty-six.
Okay. So I, for me, being on the, in the phase one, I don't think it's a huge problem, but if, if somebody's, if I'm driving up on a Friday night, and I'm not sure where the hole is at that time, is there going to be some way to kind of follow the progress ahead of time, so I don't have to get almost all the way there, and then have to detour and go all the way back around the lake?
Um, you shouldn't have to detour around the lake ever, uh, to get to your place, but like that...
Well, okay, so for phase one, but for people in phase two, that might be more of an issue.
Right, yeah, I, we've, we're going to give updates, and they're going to put it on the city website, I mean, we can try and, um, track how far progress, as we talked about, whether we can just, uh, you know, in that first phase, we're talking about saying where the excavation is relative to, uh, addresses. Um, in that second phase, um, yeah, it'll just be on the website, we'll give regular updates, but you can go check it out.
Uh, what's the upside, uh, the web, website?
City's website.
Just this, Cross Lake City website?
So if you look at the city website right now, they've put up a banner on the top that says Construction, or Casa sixty-six Construction Updates. And there's only one right now, which is the, uh, property packet that we handed out to you, maybe you got it. Um, via in hand or in the mail, I'm not sure, but we'll add to that regularly.
Okay, I, I would encourage you to try to get an update out at least, you know, towards the end of each week,
Oh, yeah.
so people have an idea where things are at before all the traffic comes into town.
I think John would like one every day, right?
Daily?
Just a little blurb about where things are, we can try and do that.
Okay, that sounds good. All right, well, thank you.
Yep, thanks a lot. Anybody else have a question, concern? Looked pretty satisfied out there. All right. Yeah?
I'll make a motion, we adjourn. Or close the meeting, whatever.
Second.
Second in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks for coming, folks.